I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for all attending. Pretty full agenda today and a pretty large crowd, so hopefully we can make this work for everybody. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is for Friday, September 28, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center here at 3500 Edgewater Drive, or Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cellphones. Before I get into the consent agenda, a few things I'd like to just cover from business from the last meetings. One of the things is, there's going to be a slight change in our agenda today. We are changing the order of one of the discussions. We're going to put the discussion, which is Item E, under the action agenda. We're moving that forward to, which is the kitchen and irrigation options to follow the presentation by Mr. Schultz. Okay? That way, when we move into the next resolution, we'll have already discussed the kitchen and the irrigation. Another couple areas I'd like to mention is, you know, all of the documents that we talked about today in this meeting are online at the sunnillakedistrict.org website. So if anybody wishes to see these documents, they're placed roughly a week before this meeting, so you can review them. That's everything that we discuss. Okay? A few other quick items. You know, this board is, attempts to do the best they can for this community, and I think it's very important that people recognize that we're not going to be able to answer all of their questions or meet all of their needs. We're just trying to do the best for the overall community, so I'd appreciate if people would respect that. Public comment will come. It comes at different and various times. The public comment is really three minutes. We do extend it sometimes to two minutes. The public comment is strictly that. Public comment is not a question and answer session. If there's a question that comes up, it can be answered very quickly. The board, or the district, or the appropriate person will answer that question. If not, we will get back to that individual at a later date through some form of written communication and/or phone call. And the final part is, please respect this board. We're here, as I said, to do a job. If people get upset, and I understand that, but we're only trying to do a job, so don't take anything out personally on board members here. That means the board to board as well. It means the board to district. It means the board to the individuals that are here. With that said, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. And the consent agenda, I'll read the three items, and then we'll have some board discussion and then public comment, if necessary. The minutes of the board meeting supervises regular meeting held Friday, August 31, 2018. B, Resolution Number 2018-09/14-31. A resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve budget amendment number 2018-9 to the 2018 budget for insurance proceeds. And Section C is Resolution Number 2018-09/14-32. A resolution of the Sun and Lake Sebring Improvement District to change its regularly scheduled board meeting date from November 16, 2018, to November 9, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Okay. Board comment? Public comment? Chrissy?
Supervisor Stiegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
Okay. Action agenda, a presentation from Cliff Schultz Architects. Cliff has been working with us. This pertains to both the kitchen and the expansions to the clubhouse. I'm not sure, Tanya, do you have any additional?
Good morning. I'd like to introduce Clifford Schultz with CMSA. This is Clifford M. Schultz Architects out of Sarasota, and Daniel Schaefer is also here with him. Welcome, and I'll let you start your presentation.
I want to thank the board and the Sun and Lake staff and associates for having us here today. We were asked by Sun and Lake to take a look at the options for expanding some of the interior dining or air-conditioned dining areas that you have now, as well to look at expanding potentially additional outdoor dining, covered dining areas, once we were to go ahead and fill in some of the screened-in areas that you have now. The boards that we're looking at, the first one is the existing conditions that you have. That shows the existing kitchen, as it is now, along with the banquet hall seating, the interior dining seating, the existing bar, as well as the outdoor screened-in dining areas that you have. That total seating that you currently have, both indoor and out, including the bar, is 296 seats. Now, these are layouts that we did. We didn't survey the existing furniture or anything like that, but we used code-compliant seating layouts to come up with these estimates for the number of seats. On the right part of the board, you can see the three-dimensional perspective of the existing facility as it now stands. This board shows Scheme A, which basically includes... It doesn't really get all the way there. Maybe I can... Can everybody hear me?
You can take the mic with you.
You can shut those lights off in front of the bank. It should come right out, but that's it.
There we go. Don't want to break it. Anyway, I'm just going to walk right up here. Might be the easiest. In Scheme A, what we're looking at is enclosing 915 square feet of what is now screened dining area. And we would keep this area, which is approximately 800 square feet of outdoor or screened-in dining area. What we like about this move for enclosing the 915 square feet is it solves one of the problems that you have with the bar, and that is that the bar seating on the south end of it is so close to the exterior wall that it's very tight to get back and forth, and has caused some interruption in service and just not really a great situation. In doing that, we're going to be removing the sliding, or the French door, the glass and the French door areas along this area to open it up, and we'll be putting new structure up near the existing structure to carry that load. With Scheme A, your indoor dining area is 126 square, or excuse me, 126 seats, which includes the additional seating that we got by enclosing that area. And then you still have, at the bar, the 26 seats. The outdoor seating reduces down to 30, I think it's 38 seats. Trying to read it. 28 seats. And the banquet hall remains at 112 seats, for a total of 252 square, seats.
Cliff? Cliff? Isn't that 292 with that on Plan A? Would that be 292?
I'm sorry.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm reading this correctly.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that. Scheme B is to go ahead and enclose all of the screened area in here and turn it into conditioned space for seating. And with that, you end up with 164 seats in the indoor area. Again, the bar seating is at, I'm sorry, this is hard to read, 26 as well. And the outdoor seating now is zero, and the banquet hall seating remains at 112. Again, this solves the issue with the bar area and provides for additional interior Scheme C incorporates everything that we had done in the B scheme, which was to get all of this area as interior dining area, and then adds exterior outdoor dining covered area with 50 seats, still retaining the ramp that was recently put in, the accessibility ramp there. And then you can see on the three-dimensional rendering where we have enclosed all the areas along the side, back, along this line, and then have covered seating out on this end. That covered seating, we didn't set it up for it to be, or I didn't include in any costing for screening it, but it easily could be screened. That total seating in that situation is 248, or 348 seats, both indoor and outdoor. Scheme B, again, with a 15 percent contingency on it, comes out to $287,850. I'm sorry.
Wait. Wait.
There we go. No, it's not working. Can you just advance one?
That's all there is.
Scheme C takes into consideration the cost for Scheme B with the additional cost for Oh.
I was going to say, I think that's the last slide.
I had put the packets for the board showing some of the cost calculations that we had the covered terrace outdoor seating, for a total of $423,423. done, and these are estimates that we had done of probable construction cost. Now, again, these are estimates by an architect, so, but we feel they're pretty close. We use the Walker Guide to Construction Costs, which is up-to-date and accurate. Oh, here they are.
Can you even mic this up?
Right. Set A.
At some point, I would recommend that a contractor give us a review of those numbers and confirm
Yeah, perfect.
those. So it's really a selection that you can make. You know, how far do you want to take it? Doing the design work ourselves, I like the last scheme, which incorporates all of it. I think what it does, you have available land there to have some outdoor covered terrace area for dining, for 50 seats, and then you can incorporate the, what you already have by enclosing it to get really inexpensive indoor seating. We would design it so that the window systems that we would put in, that we're using to enclose the exterior, would consist of some exit doors, which are required by code, but also sliding glass panels, too, so that if the weather's nice and people want to open up those panels so that you're indoors, but yet you want the screened area feel, you could do that as well. But during times like this, you could close it up and it be fully air-conditioned. So the approach that we took with the costing was, is that we would be adding additional air-conditioning systems to handle the exterior, or the additional square footage that we're enclosing in air-conditioning. I think that's my presentation.
Thank you very much, Cliff.
Mm-hmm.
For discussion board comment?
I can give you a couple of observations. One is that leaving the west side screened is not particularly functional, even unless it's in the dead of winter, because it's, it would be used late in the afternoon, and you get direct sunlight, and it's hot out there. So I'm not sure that...
Dan, could you speak a little closer to the mic?
I'm not sure that A makes a whole lot of sense from the way it's designed. Also, I'll give you an observation that the only time, it's very rare that people willingly go out on the porch now. That's only when you're banished to the porch, when they're using it for something else. So I'm not sure that the covered space works particularly well here, for whatever reason.
Is that a weather thing? Or, because what we're finding on most of the clubs we do, that's coveted space when the weather's right.
It has been at clubs I belong to before, but for some reason, not particularly here. And it may be a function of it being on the west side, and it's hot.
Yeah, that could be. Although they do have the south side, too, you know, although the south gets quite a bit of sun as well.
Yeah. I do have a question. If you did, if you did the outdoor space, it doesn't seem to me to be very proximate to the kitchen, so are you going to, I don't know how you would functionally get waiters and waitresses through there without, to the outside, without going through the middle of the dining space?
We did run this through with CJ Fishman, who's our kitchen consultant, that on the kitchen work that we've done, he's been involved. He felt there was no problem at all, you know, serving. We, you know, in taking the design a little further, we may have some service areas that we add, but they're small, and it's just a place to stack trays and things like that. But we wouldn't need, say, fountain drinks or any kind of machinery. They felt like they could do it all from the kitchen side. And one thing I would like to add, Dan, that, you know, the bar area, I think by expanding to the south, enclosing that area into air-conditioned space, solves that problem I had said about how tight it is back there. But also, I think we might need to look at some further studies with how we can partially separate that bar off a little bit, visually and from a sound standpoint. Without putting walls in and things like that, you're never going to completely separate it. But I understand there's activities at the bar that may interfere with some of the dining facilities, and I think visually, we've done it before with three-quarter high walls that have louver systems. You can either open them or shut them and things like that. They're not very expensive for what you get, and it gives you that visual separation and a fair sound separation. And that's just something I wanted to add. We didn't show it on the drawings, but I think it's something we should consider if it goes further.
I have a, can you, I didn't hear you. Could you just go over to, you were talking about the glass sliding doors?
Yes.
Can you just go over that one more time, please?
Sure. Let's see if I can get this slide back. Oh, I'm sorry. Got too many curves. The area right in through here, that is a new storefront system that we would be having. These are the exit doors we talked about, and that is what you see right back here and right through there. What we're envisioning with that is that you're able to open sliding windows. You would have a crossbar that would be at like railing height with glass, and above that, up to about eight feet high, you'd be able to open these panels, and they'd have screening on it. So in the event where the weather's really nice, and, you know, during season, and you wanted to open this area up to both being air-conditioned and outdoors, you could do that. The, and it's a hurricane-resistant system, they're actually, they're not inexpensive, but they're not over the top either.
But if you opened up those windows, wouldn't that be a drag on your air conditioning for the rest of the building?
It would. It would, you would only do it when the temperature, the ambient temperature outside is, the relative humidity is such that your air conditioning is really just moving air. It's not really cooling, just because, you know, the outdoor temperature might be 72 degrees or whatever.
Okay. And then one last question. Out of the, let's, if you take Plan B, which is 287,000, 288,000, if we put in normal, regular windows, as opposed to the sliding windows, approximately, what would happen to that cost?
I think you'd reduce it by about $40,000.
$40,000?
Yeah. It's, having fixed storefront compared to moving storefront is considerably cheaper.
Oh, and the last dumb question is, they're all hurricane-proof to what extent?
We would design to the county requirements, which I believe are 140 mile an hour here.
Okay. Thank you.
Actually, just to add, with all the events of the hurricanes, we're doing it everywhere. It doesn't matter where it is, you know?
I have, I have one question. It's probably more directed at Cliff, and probably you. If we, if we did the outside extension, the outdoor part, is 50, for the price of that, for 50 seats, is that, I mean, when I see the difference in the cost, is that something that's, would be worth it for 50 more seats and be used?
Really, the outside kind of, let me put me on the spot here. In my opinion, I don't know if we would get anywhere near the return as any of the other Plan A or Plan B. It could be, you know, Phase C or something like that, but there is no problem at all. I totally agree with Cliff. There is no problem at all about being too far away from the kitchen. That's just, that's, that's not an issue. But as few times as we would use that in a year, and kind of what I've seen so far, yeah, that may be, that may be a reach. Does that answer your question?
Do you have any?
Well, I will add that it is relatively inexpensive seating. I would put more than 50 seats out there, and you do have room to do that, if you were going to do it. You know, whether it's viable or not is really almost an internal question as to, you know, if the people aren't using, you know, the out, or the screened-in areas you've got now, I don't know if they would use this. That is somewhat contrary to what we see at most of the clubs we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I do have a few. I really like the sketches and the architectural look to this. Nice job on that.
Thank you.
Because it always comes down to what we really need. I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. If we take all of the outdoor seating that we currently have today and enclose that, we will go from basically the existing building of 296 seats to 348 seats, correct?
That's correct.
That includes inside and outside. Okay. If we go with Scheme B, we go from 296 seats to 302 seats. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So for us to really, and I'm not saying this direction, for us to really capitalize on growing the dining seating area, we would best be off going with C, which is the most expensive option, to provide us with the 348 seats. So I'm interpreting this correctly?
You are. The reason why it appears a little odd to go from A to B and only gain a few seats is you're just going from outside screened-in seats, more or less, to conditioned seats.
Okay.
And then when you go to Scheme C, then you add in the 50 outdoor seats, which is why the jump.
Thank you very much. I guess I'll have a question then for Cliff, and I don't, I don't mean to put you on the spot now. You might have to get back to us on this. This doesn't increase the banquet hall at all. We remain the same at the banquet hall. However, if we had banquets, and we closed down the whole pub and everything else, then you could, in fact, accommodate a larger group, which would displace some membership.
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely right. It doesn't increase the main banquet room, but again, as, and even though I, we're trying to create another area, and especially another member area, kind of what Cliff said before about the possibility of, you know, some louver doors or a half-wall, you know, there could be another small space that we could explore as well in that spot. So, but existing without doing that, the answer's no.
Okay.
I think I can comment a little further that, too. We didn't show it, but as an example, this area can be conditioned, and it can still have doors on it, you know, so it becomes a private dining or, you know, I mean, there's a lot of ways to divvy this up. The one thing I think is important is this area right here to facilitate the bar. You know, we looked at the bar, got a lot of money in that bar, and we really don't want to move it. It backs up to all the kegs, storage, and everything there. And this was the area that I was thinking could have some of the, either partitions or walls in it, to make this more of like a pub sort of thing, and then this remains dining, or you could have this as well. There's a lot of options. I think there's some separation that we're not showing that needs to be done between the bar area, pub area, and the dining area.
Thank you very much. I don't know the rest of the board members here. My concern would be, and I think, and I hope to put, don't want to put you on the spot, Dan, but if we could see incorporated in that proposal that I think you guys are going to work on, or a business plan, if you could incorporate into your business plan, if this was a direction that the community went, how would that would enhance your revenue and go out of line? That would be really helpful. Dan, do you agree with me, Dan?
Yeah, I do. I do think one thing we need to keep in mind is that you're talking about not changing the number of seats significantly, other than if you go with C. But you are taking 74 seats that aren't very usable right now, and putting them inside air-conditioning. So in essence, the total number of seats doesn't change that much. The number of usable seats changes significantly.
Correct.
Particularly if you could do something like you're talking about, to have a member area so that the members or residents who want to come up for dining don't get kicked out when we have some big facility, some big deal. I think that would make a lot of difference to me. I don't...
I don't know the, the rest of the board members here. My concern would be, and I think, and I hope to put, don't want to put you on the spot, Dan, but if we could see incorporated in that proposal that I think you guys are gonna work on, or a business plan, if you could incorporate into your business plan, if this was a direction that the community went, how would that would enhance your revenue and go out of line? That would be really helpful. Dan, do you agree with me, Dan, or?
Yeah, I do. I, I do think one thing we need to keep in mind is that you're talking about not changing the number of seats significantly other, other than if you go with C. But you are taking seventy-four seats that aren't very usable right now and putting them inside air-conditioned. So in essence, the total number of seats doesn't change that much. The number of usable seats changes significantly.
Correct.
Particularly if you could do something like you're talking about, to have a member area so that the members or residents who want to come up for dining don't get kicked out when we have some big facility, some big, uh, deal. I, I think that would make a lot of difference to me. I, I don't, I personally don't think we get a lot from C that we don't already have in B just from the way we use things here. Uh, I can tell you, though, at, at other clubs I belong to, that you're exactly right. The outdoor seating was significantly more used, particularly, for example, in Texas, it's, it's just like it is here. It's too darn hot to go out there in the summertime, but in the winter, it was very nice. And everybody seemed to congregate there as opposed to being inside. I'm not saying it couldn't be used. I'm just saying us a hundred-and-fifty grand, we don't necessarily need to spend, but we could do later. I mean, it's, it's not something that has to be done in conjunction with this.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Um, you have another question, I guess?
Well, Dan? I guess I'm confused. I thought we were trying to make more desirable seating available than we had, than we have currently. And that's why we're having this conversation. Maybe I'm wrong. Why exactly are we doing this? Or looking at this? I mean, what is the purpose?
Well, I mean, you're absolutely right. It's just increasing more desirable seating, moving the, uh, I mean, there are just so many nights that we're turning people away just because we're completely full. Um, we have an issue with a lot of the shotguns that come in all at the same time, and not everybody actually gets to sit down. So, and the, the second issue is trying to create kind of a member resident area where people can have some beers and after their game, that separates them a little bit more from the rest of the public. I mean, right now, some of the seating on the, I guess on the west-hand side, we really can't use hardly at all because, because where the members congregate now, it's, folks just don't want us to seat the public there, and it's just, and, and it is. It's a little uncomfortable. So, not only, as the members would migrate to the other side of that bar, it would create a ton of extra seating on the west-hand side. Even existing, even if we don't do B, even existing, it would, that would create so much more seating that would be available for the public and residences and, you know? So, the answer is yes, but the, maybe the side benefit would be, as, as we kind of talk about more space for a, a room of forty or fifty people, too. That's just a side benefit.
So we're creating more desirable seating than we have?
Absolutely.
Mark's point, if we go, if we did Option B, on paper, it says we only pick up six seats. But what you're saying is that there's six, that there's probably seventy more desirable seating?
Yeah, I mean, everybody wants to sit together. All the members want to sit together and sit with their friends and they... When people say, oh, we don't have a seat unless it's on the patio, they feel like that they're banished to the patio. It's, you're right. It's just not, it's, it's, people want to sit inside.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further board comment? Okay. At this time, what I'd like to do, as I stated at the very beginning, we would like to entertain some public comment, okay? And without that, I, I know there's going to be questions associated with this public comment. If it's a pretty quick answer, you could handle it. I'd greatly appreciate it. If not, what we will have to do is take that question down, and then we can meet with you to get an answer for that, that person. Is that agreeable to you?
Oh, yes.
Is that agreeable to the board? Okay. Public comment at this time. Wow. That's even, that works even better. Oh, you, you need to actually take the mic. We need it on the recording, please.
I just have one question. Now, I'm, I'm not into all this stuff. It's beyond me. But what about acoustics? I go in there when the place is full, and you, it's a nightmare.
What about what?
The acoustics. You can't hear. You sit with your, you're sitting with somebody and then you can't even talk to them because it's too noisy when you got the place full. And I don't sit, didn't hear anything about doing something about the acoustics to make that a little better.
Thank you. The, uh, in country clubs, we have found, especially in the age group of the clubs that we work at, uh, acoustics is very important. That's a little bit further down the road that we would address that, but it definitely would be part of our construction documents and the design work that we do. Part of the ease of this plan is, one, you've already got roof structure that we're filling in. So that is, um, as I said before, that is, uh, inexpensive additional space. With that, we're have, going to have to add some air conditioning units to handle the space, which is an exterior space, which gets more loading, you know, of heat. But through that, we'll be doing some drywall work to enclose additional ductwork and things like that. That drywall that we use, we use special acoustic panels to handle or make that acoustical issues that you might have much less. Uh, the problem is it's hard surfaces, and if you have just a drywall ceiling or a wood ceiling or something like that, you're, it's gonna bounce off of that, and that's when you get feedback and it's hard to hear. I have the same issue myself. If I get in, I've got a lot of crosstalk going on and some, it's hard for me to hear. So you need some sound deadening materials, and we definitely would be looking at that, but at a little bit later date.
Thank you, Cliff.
If you do something in the new areas, but you don't do the banquet hall and all that other part, it's not gonna help. It's gonna be hard to help.
So we don't get into a, a long Q and A here because?
Could I ask one other question?
As you know, each question will generate another question. So can we potentially get back to him on that?
Okay. Cliff?
Could you go up and also announce your name and, so we can have this for the record?
Good morning. Thank you so much, Board, for all you do. If you don't get those appreciations, no, we really do appreciate what you guys are doing, and I like the new setup. Looks great. Uh, Javita McKinney. I'm in the, uh, Sunning Lake area near the hospital. And been here two years, and I'm very much enjoying it. The, uh, ceiling fans, I thought might help outside. You probably already are doing that for that outside area, 'cause I do like sitting outside. That, that is an awesome spot.
We almost typically always, when we do a covered terrace area, we'll have ceiling fans. It, it's a good way to move air and, uh, and you have to do that, you know, to make it comfortable for people. So that would almost be an automatic that we would do. We, we haven't addressed it yet. We're not that far down the road. You mean for the outdoor area? Well, we do, we do misters, you know, a lot of different things. It just, it depends on the use. You know, you're not gonna use misters in an area where you're dining, you know, but, uh, uh, we can, you know, the ceiling fans these days, they move a lot of air. Some of the more high-tech ones that we do use.
And this is primarily just a proposal at this point in time. They would fine-tune all of those details, the things that you've just brought up as well. Those are all good, good things we would add in there. Okay? Further public comment?
Good morning. I was here at the last meeting, and I spoke about the drainage. I think then I would get the drainage to run across from the house. The water is still there.
Excuse me, excuse me. I hate to interrupt. Is this pertaining to the subject matter here?
Uh, uh, okay.
Yes?
Well, no. I'm just...
Is your question referencing the expansion of the?
No. I'm just referring about the drainage.
Could you reserve that? We, we will have public comment later on, other subjects?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning. Bill Norcross, resident. I, I really appreciate the, uh, the good ideas and the pragmatic approach of, uh, improving the seating capacity of, uh, Sunning Lake. Uh, the, this plans A, B, and C and B. So, uh, the problem I have right now presently is the kitchen disservice the Patriot. And, and, and I, I kind of understand that you say it's gonna be easier going from the kitchen to the outside on the southern portion of that screened-in area now. I think there's gonna be more of a problem. And also, you'll have a different floor level. Are you gonna bring up the floor a little bit more so that it's not that drop-off? When you enclose the building, uh, the floor level has to be up because you're worried about water coming in. I understand that. So, um, the idea of having sliders and outside wall problems that I can see coming up because you have, that back wall is a supporting wall, and you're gonna be able to not go crazy, 'cause I don't know how far you can expand and keep it open without posts. Is that possible?
Yes. The, there are existing beams up there now, concrete beams, that we can add on to with steel flitch plates on either side. We've looked at trying to keep our maximum span to about thirty feet, and that's very doable. Uh, and opening up the area. I, I think if we were to keep all of the wall, you know, the structure that's there now, it would be so cut up. It, it would be, uh, it, it wouldn't be worth doing. Yeah. So structurally, we don't have issues. And I won't say we don't have challenges, but, uh, but we shouldn't have issues.
I understand, and I appreciate your, uh, uh, demonstration here, and I just hope that one of these plans are, uh, are implemented because, uh, some change has to be made. It was basically a mistake when this building was built. We had input, but we didn't have enough. And then they just didn't follow the instructions. We didn't have soundproofing. We didn't have tinted windows. The bar situation against the wall was not good. So I appreciate any improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Rick Holbert, resident. I agree that there needs to be something done, but I'm looking at the amount of money that we're going to spend. And I'm looking at the picture up there right now, and I'm going to say to myself, do we really need to spend this kind of money? You know, you start adding this up, and I'm, we're looking at a half a million dollars just for this. We haven't even talked about the kitchen yet. Now, are we gonna get this, and how much is the return gonna be? And how soon is that return gonna come back to us? And when will it come back to us? Gentlemen, we gotta think about this really hard. I mean, I know we need to make some changes, but do we need to make them right now? You know, there's an awful lot. I go in there a lot of times, and that place is empty after seven o'clock at night. It is empty. Come on, let's make account of what we're doing here. Let's look at, you know, where this money is gonna be spent and why we're spending it, because we need to know when we're gonna get this money back. Please think about it real hard. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Good morning, all. My name is Holman. I've been living in Sunning Lake for fifteen years. This is my first meeting, and I'm happy that I'm here. I concur with the questions asked by the previous speaker. I have been in industrial engineering and safety engineering for, since nineteen sixty-nine. And the matter of acoustics might not be very expensive. I have found in my experience that a couple strategically placed drills can improve the acoustics tremendously. So maybe you could look at that. And again, concurring with the previous speaker, I think we should take careful look at what we are doing, get some industrial engineering input, both the layout and the, that sort of thing. I am willing to assist in whatever way I can to look at the drawings and do what I can to assist, but in line with what I said before. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for, uh, offering your assistance.
Tom Costi, resident. For those that weren't here when the clubhouse was built, after the, uh, thing was opened, there was a tremendous sound problem in that clubhouse. And a consulting firm was brought in, and they suggested that we go with a blown-in, uh, acoustic-absorbing material on the walls of the nineteenth hole. And that was done at considerable expense. It's considerably quieter, more quiet in there now than it was when it was initially built. Quite a bit of money was spent to, to, to fix that problem, including the hanging of, uh, materials in the ceiling to try to absorb, et cetera. There is sound-absorbing material in the banquet hall. Just so you know, I, I'm surprised that that information wasn't put before you when you did your studies. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. No further public comment? Thank you very much, Cliff. I appreciate it. Okay, moving right along. Moving right along, uh, public hearing resolution two-zero-one-eight dash zero-nine dash fourteen dash thirty-three. Actually, it's slash fourteen dash thirty-three. A resolution to the Sunning Lake Sebring Improvement District to establish and adopt a tentative budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen based on the estimates of the revenues and expenditures from the district's general utility and golf funds providing for conflicts, providing for surability, and providing on an effective date. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay. I'm gonna wait for one of my colleagues since we're down to four people here today. I will make a comment while, while I have this brief moment. I'm not sure if everybody saw in the correspondence we received. There was some question at the last budget meeting about the MGA and getting the funds for running the couples' tournaments. Did you all have an opportunity to see that? Okay, so you realize that that's gonna continue to run exactly the same as it has in the past?
Yeah, well, I, I think at the last meeting, we said it would. I mean, it would...
It was still up in the air because Cliff, he got together with, uh...
Not for this year, but next, we were talking strictly next year, I thought, anyway. I didn't know it was a problem for this year.
No, he had taken it out. We're doing B. Oh, I apologize, yes. Wow. Yeah, I'm the one that corrected it, and then we didn't do it, um, but my colleagues did. Actually, before we do that resolution, let's talk about the discussion for the irrigation and the kitchen amongst the board. Omar? These are your proposals, the multiple proposals. Are you finding any options?
Right. So the districts prepared two, um, financing proposals based off, one, the current tentative budget, which includes the nine-eighty for the, um, kitchen expansion. And we've also included a few different scenarios based off last meeting's discussions on the irrigation. So Option A provides, uh, financing options for kitchen renovation. We've included three-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the lanai enclosure, um, which was just an estimated figure at the time. And then we've also included, go ahead and fund the entire irrigation upgrades based off Billy Casper-Golf's recommendation. Option B, um, provides the same kitchen lanai completion, um, but only includes paying cash for the deer-run greens loops and pump repairs. By doing that, we've postponed doing the entire deer-run irrigation for about two years and paying cash at that point for Option B. years and paying cash at that point for option B. We've also included a few other capital items, such as, right now, we have the district office just based off the five-year capital plan. And then we've also included 10 years down the road, Billy Casper Golf Field's, the turtle run irrigation will also be in a similar situation as we are now with the deer run. So, all of our financing options are based off a $1.5 million loan. We've reached out to a few local banks to get an estimated interest rate. They provided 5% to be just a rough figure. So, all of our scenarios are based off of that financing mechanism. We've also included a few assumptions, which I've mentioned in my memo. The first is how much the district will have in net income or loss, which has been taken into consideration in this spreadsheet. And we've also included a few additional revenues, just for prediction purposes, just so we can see and maintain some sort of level of reserves throughout this entire process.
Anything else, Omar?
I think that's it.
Could I ask, I know we turned the lights down because of the Cliff Schultz presentation. Can we turn them up a little? I feel like I'm in a cave. I know it's nice to see the screen, but at the same time, it's tough on my eyes. You don't have to turn them up all the way, but just, yeah. That's good. Thank you. Thank you very much. Board discussion.
I honestly don't see us spending $1,004,000 in the clubhouse for kitchen and lanai expansion. I just don't think that's realistic. I don't think there's any question that we have to do the irrigation upgrades, but I think there is a question as to whether we have to do it all at one time. If I were in Billy Casper shoes and I said, "Give me a recommendation," they're not going to stand there and say, "Well, you ought to do the kitchen first because that puts them in a bad position." But we're in no worse position if we don't do it for a year or two than we are today. To me, we ought to do what we can afford to do, as we can afford to do it. We're not going to know what we can do with the clubhouse until we know what the kitchen's going to cost us. And I've heard everything from $500,000, which I could probably stomach, to, and then add another quarter million on top of it. I like Ray's point that we don't really need $40,000 worth of sliders. So, that puts you, if you want my feeling, you probably get $900 and do both, and then do the greens loops and probably the pump upgrade and look at spreading the other out over a two-year term. That's just my personal opinion. I don't really see borrowing money if we don't have to. I don't know what level of reserves do we need to keep.
Six months at a minimum.
And that's how much?
2.5 million.
We've already backed that out. So, this $5 million that's up for capital does not include what our minimum reserves. We've already allocated $3 million for our minimums.
Okay, so we can do what we're talking about doing here.
This is all capital expenditure funds. Correct.
Okay. Seems to me a pretty simple concept. You can't spend money you can't afford to. And I don't think we can afford to put, what was it, a million, what would it be, a million three, million four? Although, we whacked $100 out of that by Cliff's presentation. That's my personal opinion.
I personally like to stick with option B until we find out what the kitchen's actually going to cost us, but I like the option B to leave stuff, and thank you for your work to make this work, but...
In essence, that's what I'm saying as well.
So, you know, that's where I stand, if you need to know that.
Well, I think, I think the board, or I guess the board has to decide what we want to do over the next five years. We have $5 million in the bank that we can spend, and if I looked at the list correctly, then I would wait the list based on what is best for the community. So, if somebody said to me, "Should we expand the clubhouse?" I would probably say, "Yeah, that's going to help. That gives us more capacity," which is one of the complaints that we had, et cetera, et cetera. If somebody said, "Do we have to do irrigation and fix deer run?" I'd say, "Yeah, because golf courses are life and bread, and if we don't have a decent golf course, we've got a problem." The properties, you know, the value of the properties will go down. So, I think that's important. If they said, "Do we need a district office?" I'd probably say, "No, I don't think that's going to serve the benefit of the community at this point in time. Maybe 10 years down the road, we'll need a district office." But with everything else that I see that we have to make a decision on, I don't believe that's one of the ones that I would vote for. Do we need to do an expansion of a pool? Would that help the community? Yes, I think it would. I think it makes us more attractive to people and certainly services to people in the community now where we have limitations on what we can, how many people can go to the pool. The kitchen, you know, I have yet to hear why we should spend $980,000 on the kitchen. Nobody has come to, I mean, first day, we were told that there was a possible safety issue, and then we found out that so far, there's only been one claim in 10 years, or one claim in nine years, so I have to rule out the safety issue. And quite frankly, nobody has told me or given me any other reason why to do the kitchen or redo the kitchen, except for the fact that we want to redo the kitchen. So, I would have to say, "No, that's not going to help anybody in the community." And I would stand with that until somebody says, "This is why we have to do it, and this is the benefit to the people." But of all that list, we still come up with $6 million of possible expenditures to fix up, you know, to help Sunland Lake, to do things for Sunland Lake. We know we only have $5 million. We know we don't want to spend all $5 million. So, I would have to say, "What are our options?" And give me our options. But the board first has to decide what we want to do. You can't do it just for one year. If you say, "I'm going to do it this next year," then we're going to sit down, you know, "This is what I want to do for 2018 or '19," and we pass the budget for whatever that is, we're going to be in the same conversation next year. So, you know, it's almost like our government, where we're going to kick it down the road. And it's kind of, you know, I think we have to decide what we want to do, based on what we know, and then try and figure out a way to pay for it. And if we figure out we can't pay for it without hurting ourselves, we don't do it. But first, it starts with the board making a decision. So, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just so I understand where the board is directing. Here's, I believe, Michael, you said that you were inclined to go with the option B.
Yes.
Okay, and that is not, can't hear me? Wow, that's amazing. Okay, Michael is inclined to go towards option B. Ray is inclined to say...
On the presentation that they made?
Yes. Well, again, I want to look at it as its whole package. If I had to look at one item, I would do it option B without the sliding doors, so it'd be $40,000 less.
And Dan?
I agree with that. I think we're ahead of ourselves on the kitchen issue until we know what it's going to cost us. I'm not going to sign off on, I'm not ready to sign off on a million bucks for a new kitchen, but I'm not ready to pull it out either if we can figure out how to get it done for $500 or whatever.
And that's precisely where I was heading on this. I just want to make sure that I'm in sync with what the other thought processes are with the board. So, what you're saying, or what we're saying, is funding the entire kitchen expansion with equipment and lanai enclosure, however we do that, whether it be with cash or not, and we have to determine that, funding only the deer run greens loops and pump repairs for the 18-19 fiscal year, 18-19, and then remaining deer run, yeah, remaining deer run repairs projected for the 2021 season. Now, how we pay for that is another story, okay? But if we're looking to do all of these things, we, I go right back to what Dan said. I'm not about to commit to any of this until I know what the real costs are and the business plan that we've been kind of thinking we might get. There's a letter in here that kind of talks a little bit about it, says that the revenues would approximately improve by $100,000 and a $20,000 profit. It's not, that's at least the rough numbers. Am I correct, Cliff?
Just a good guess. It's correct.
Okay, but that's a good guess, and I don't, however you guys came up with that, that's what you're estimating, okay? So, we have a $980,000 place marker in this year's budget, and we still can't figure out what we want to do as far as a kitchen. We don't know if we want to build it out partially. We don't know if we want to build it with equipment. I realize it's a place marker, and we can go forward, get the quotes for the, on the bid for the RFP, and then we might have a better understanding. I think all of these things need to be done, but I don't think I have enough information to say, "Yes, I'm willing to spend this kind of money." That's me personally.
We are not going to get a plan that is going to satisfy a business plan. Dan knows this. We're not going to get a business plan that's going to satisfy us. It ain't going to happen. I don't know why we're kidding ourselves and waiting for this plan to come that's going to save the, whether we do the kitchen or not. There is no plan that you guys could ever create that's going to justify spending $980,000. It just ain't going to happen. I don't know why we can't just accept that fact. They're not going to be able to show us. They're saying on a piece of paper, $20,000 a year. So, that would be 55 years to pay off the kitchen.
I don't believe I said the business plan had to make money, but there's a giant sucking sound going on over there right now of $350,000 a year that we got to fix, one way or the other. If we want to go back to hot dogs and hamburgers, that's okay by me, but that's what we're talking about with expanding the seating capacity so that we can actually do more volume. Putting a kitchen in there without fixing the seating capacity is like putting a jet engine in a Volkswagen. It might sound good, but it ain't going to work very well. But I don't, again, I'm not ready to jump on a million bucks or $1,004,000 for a kitchen and seating expansion either. But I don't think we know until we actually go out for bids what it is going to cost us, and then we got to, we got to get our cost in line before we know what we can and can't do. I would agree that I don't see us spending however much that, all those numbers are for a district office. What is that, $800,000, $1,007,000? I don't see that happening in the next five years either. But those are place markers, and, you know, a five-year plan is just a plan. A one-year plan is what we're really going to try to do. But we can't know what the one-year plan is until we get some numbers that are honest-to-goodness hard numbers. And as I said, I've heard everything from a half million dollars to $980,000, and now there's another $350,000 in there. So, it's, we're just, we're playing with numbers until we actually get some hard cost, and we can look at it and say, "Not going to do that," or, "Yep, that makes sense, and we'll do it." My issue with the business plan is we got to figure out how to lower that deficit. Do I think the kitchen will ever really make money? Probably not. It's an amenity for the residents of Sunland Lake, and it needs to be looked at as such. But the question is, how much are we willing to spend for that amenity? The pool's not going to make money either, neither are the tennis courts. It's something that you do. My issue is, I'm okay with spending money for capital improvements. Good with that. Losing money on an operating basis is a whole different question, and that's my issue with the whole thing. Figure out what the capital expenditure is, that's good. I want to see a business plan that says, instead of losing $350,000, we're going to lose $250,000 because we can have more seats and we'll sell more stuff. That's my issue with the business plan.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with what Dan just said. I don't think from day one that anybody thought we would get a return on our investment as far as the dollars and cents.
No.
What we are looking at is providing to the community some amenities, some flexibility in some other areas, but at the same time, you don't want to throw the money in there and not be able to least reduce some of the assessment that we keep giving back to them, however that is. Until we get back the RFP for the costs, I know we have the $980,000 place marker in there. I don't see how we, anybody can make a decision on it. We're leaving the money, in my estimation, we're leaving the money in there strictly as a place marker. It is not a commitment that we will be doing this.
Well, I'm sorry, it's a budget, is it not? I didn't know we had place markers in a budget.
It is absolutely, it's a budget, okay? The question that came up, I think, early on was they were looking at roughly $1 million to do the kitchen and, the kitchen expansion and the equipment, and that number has bounced all over the place over the, you know, a year's worth of meetings. If we don't put it in there, we get an RFP that comes back, and it says, "We can do this job for $600,000," then we won't have the money in the budget to do it. You know, I guess we could do a budget amendment and add that $600,000 in there?
Yes, the board has the ability, yes.
So, the real question would be, do you want to, does anybody on this board, and I'm not speaking, they want to take the $980,000 out, still go through the RFP process, and then potentially have to come back and do a budget amendment for some number to do that kitchen?
Yes, I would be in favor of that.
We already had this vote, and I voted no. I want to leave it there until we get those prices.
I agree. I want to leave it there until we get the prices. Honestly, you're going to wind up having to make an amendment anyway because the chances of it coming in at exactly $980,000 are somewhere between slim and none. So, sooner or later, you're going to have to do an amendment, but I'd a lot rather have a place marker there that tells me we can afford to do this if it comes back within the reasonable parameters. That's all, to me, that says to us.
Well, I didn't hear what they said.
Well, I think the consensus, the consensus, since we only have four, the consensus was to leave that in there as a place marker until we see what the actual pricing will be, and at that point in time, then the board will be faced with a decision as to what part they wish to do, what part they do not wish to do, or if they do the whole project, okay?
So, it's the same thing. Either way, we're going to end up doing the same thing, right? Correct? Either way, we're going to have to have another conversation on this, right?
Yeah, I mean, once the pricing comes back, we just don't know what the pricing's going to be.
Either way, when the price comes back, we're going to have to go through this process and have a conversation on what we want to do. That's all I'm saying.
That's true. True statement is my understanding, yes, that's the way it would work.
So, wouldn't it be better to take it out of the budget? I mean, what's, I hate to sign off on something that I'm not committed to and that none of you guys are committed to because you don't know what it is. If we can add it on later on, and we agree to add it on, that's fine. But how can you sign off on something that you don't know what you're committing to? I just, I mean, that's fine if it's three to one, I'm good with that, but it's confusing to me if it doesn't really matter.
The bid specifications are currently under review by district staff. By the next board meeting, I should have an idea to, you know, update you on the advertising dates and everything of where we are with the kitchen bid. Now, as far as the lanai goes, we have two options. We can have a local contractor come in and take a look to see if the cost estimates provided by Schultz are good estimates, or we can go ahead and have Schultz prepare a proposal for the engineered drawings, and that will, that'll be a fee, you know, on his part. I can bring that proposal to the board. So, if there's any interest in any of those options, the lanai area, if you have any direction on that, I'd appreciate it because we, you know, we can, we can reach out to the architect. reach out to the architect, or we can wait and see if what the bid prices come in for the kitchen. So we have some options.
I'd personally like to see us proceed with the Lenai expansion as in B and go ahead and get that ready for bid, because whether we actually do the whole kitchen or not, we still need to expand the seating. As Cliff said, we have days now when we're turning people away during season, so it only makes sense to me to expand our capacity, and that's relatively inexpensive. I like Ray's suggestion that we do away with the sliding doors for 40,000 bucks, I don't think it's worth that.
I agree 100%.
I'm taking that as a no.
To move forward with the engineer, to have Schultz prepare a proposal to engineer the proposal B?
So Cliff is going to provide engineering drawings so that it can go out to bid for the expansion of the Lenai, is that?
He's going to provide a proposal, and him and I are going to have to have a few conversations about that, about the timing, but I believe if we move forward and have him propose the amount, it shouldn't take much on their end. Are you asking if we can get the Lenai in at the same time as the other, the kitchen bid? That might be doable, but I have to have that conversation with him.
Mike, I like the idea, we do, okay? But we are, this thing is just growing and growing and growing, you know? This is another $300,000 on top of.
I'll see if I can have that proposal for the next meeting as far as his fee to design the Lenai, proposal B. Is that?
I didn't hear you. I'm having trouble hearing today.
Sir?
I didn't hear you, I'm having trouble hearing.
Okay, I will reach out to Clifford Schultz and have a proposal for the board at the next meeting for his services to design and engineer proposal B of the Lenai expansion.
Without the?
Without the sliding doors.
Okay.
Is that okay?
There is one other thing that we should talk eventually about, and again, it goes, it's the clubhouse, and it goes back to the presentation to the public and the presentation to the district, the people who live in the district, is maybe one of the reasons we don't do as much business out of there as we should is because it's an embarrassment. The furniture, the fixturing, the walls, you know, I think we got to look at that too, and, you know, we're piling on here with dollars, but if we're going to spend money on the clubhouse and maybe even money on the kitchen and leave the rest of the facility looking the way it is, man, that's an embarrassment. So I think we ought to think eventually about real furniture, not having cracks on the walls with paint, the sound system, as was pointed out before. I mean, that place is like, I don't know, I assume it's the original building from whenever, is that correct? And the furniture is probably the original furniture?
Correct, 2009 was the opening.
So I mean, one of these days, we're going to have, you know, if you want to have a nice facility when people come in and dine, you got to give them something, you know, to say, wow, this is really a nice looking place, not just the food, they got to feel good about where they're eating. Otherwise, they're not going to come back, I don't care how good the food is, so, you know, you can throw that in the equation since we're getting carried away here, but that is something else that has to be addressed. I don't disagree.
I don't think you're going to get, I don't think you'll get a disagreement from anybody sitting here, any of the people in the community. We're trying to take this a step at a time.
Well, the problem with taking it a step at a time, and I want the people out there to understand this, is because, you know, like, I think Rick before made a comment that we don't have the money to do it. He's absolutely right, we don't have the money to do it all, but we got to decide if, is it right for us to do it and figure out a way to get the money or to fund it. Otherwise, this conversation will go on every year to the board, whether the board is us or the board is somebody else, you know, it's got to be addressed one of these days. That's all I'm trying to say.
Duly noted. Any other board discussion? Public comment, this will be, once again, held.
One more, can I talk about the irrigation yet? Mr. Gil, I mean, do we have the same, I mean, I guess all we really need to do is kind of, you, to kind of tell us to just go ahead and take that to bid, I guess.
The irrigation is in, was part of that B that we discussed, so I'm.
Just, I'm just trying to be clear.
No, and that's, that's fine, but the irrigation is part of the B concept here.
I'm assuming, Cliff, that we're talking about the greens loops and the irrigation pump.
Right there, option B, yes.
I just want to be sure that we get, because to me, if I heard them correctly, Mr. Altam, the biggest issue is that you got, we don't have the control system on the pump, and when we have to start it up, we get a big surge.
Correct.
And we need to fix that.
Again, every time it surges, well, Earl can, Earl's right here, I don't need to talk about it.
I know Earl doesn't have much to do, but we get tired of having to work too hard. So, yeah, I want to make sure that we get that both into.
And the option B, just to make sure, once again, we're clear on this, let's talk about the kitchen expansion with equipment in the Lenai, taking out how we pay for it, which is an incredibly important part, I'm not minimizing it, but the subject matter was that, as well as funding only the deer run green loops and pump repairs, okay? And then they will revisit the other repairs for fiscal '20 and '21, okay? So those are things we're looking for as a board right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, this, I, let that German say something. I'm confused.
Sir, you have a comment, sir?
Yes, thank you. Fred Corey, I'm a resident. Just a point of clarification, we've talked for over an hour about the clubhouse, and yet in here is drainage. Is it safe to assume that we have two subject matters, irrigation and drainage, separate from the clubhouse? Then why isn't it brought up as two different resolutions? We have a need for irrigation and drainage. I think everybody in Sun and Lake, all the residents, would agree. We have a problem. That problem has to be faced now. The clubhouse, great, wonderful, but that's separate, and why isn't it separate?
Thank you very much. What we were discussing right now were some options on how we might be able to finance some of these things, such as irrigation, such as the clubhouse expansion. That's all we were talking about at this point, was a discussion how we would finance that.
Yeah, all right. We need the irrigation and the drainage, correct? We're going to have to spend the money, correct?
Potentially.
All right. We got $5 million. Why do we spend it on the irrigation and the drainage so everybody in Sun and Lake will appreciate that, including the golfers on Turtle Run?
So we have, there is a special allotment of money, I think it's 300 or 350,000 for drainage.
For drainage, we have a line item in the budget that talks about drainage for this year.
Then why aren't we talking about that, period?
Was it the last meeting?
We did.
I was here. I talked, I heard it all.
We had, yeah, we had Drew Jones.
But you got a resolution that's talking about drainage and clubhouse. Do you defeat one if you like the other?
I might be misunderstanding you, but what we're, this, we're on a line item here, number, it's actually the, under the action agenda, number six, which dealt with the kitchen and the irrigation and how we could potentially fund it if necessary, okay? It is not, we're not talking about the budget adoption for drainage, okay? This is just a discussion, if we do decide to go forward with these enhancements, how would we pay for it?
Bill Norcross, resident, I think the important thing here is progress. They used to have a TV program that said progress is the most important product, I think it was Ronald Reagan said something about that. Anyhow, you have here costs, cost, 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 all the time. We do not have the solid RFPs for how much a kitchen is going to cost. We keep on floating $930,000, which I think is completely out of the picture, but you do have some numbers as far as the expansion, which I think is a good idea, whether it's the plan B or the combo, roughly around $300,000. You have irrigation system, which I think is very important, especially on deer run. We're experiencing a lot of rain this year and the controls run just one way and not separately. I understand that. That's a $300,000 project, which I think would really help. We have a new district plan, I think that should be shelved, quite honestly. I'm concerned about the work, if you do a clubhouse, how much downtime are you going to have? Can you coordinate these plans? Can you upgrade the kitchen and then expand, or do them both at the same time, whatever? I think really a lot of thought has to be given into this, because we don't want to make any more mistakes, we've had enough do-overs here, and I really appreciate everybody's opinion here on the board, whether it's good or bad or whatever, but at least we're moving forward a little bit, inch by inch, and I'd just like to see the ball move a little faster and get all the information, and then you guys can decide whether you're going to have the plan or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's me again, Phil Mulholland. I've heard a lot of discussions this morning about spending money, and I've heard nothing about efficiencies. The gentleman before me just spoke about how we're going to integrate what we're doing, that's efficiency. I have heard nothing about efficiencies this morning, only about spending money. Where are we going to get the money from? Nothing like that comes up, not much. So gentlemen, board members, don't be just a group that is selected by people that can't do the job or unwilling to do the job, to do what is not necessary. Efficiencies must be the greatest part of what we are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'd like to comment to that. We have, and I appreciate that comment, this is not our first meeting that's discussed these projects. We've had meetings for well over a year that have discussed these particular projects, and we are looking at efficiencies, we are looking at soundproofing, we are looking at profitability or at least some kind of return, necessarily an ROI that will cover all of these costs, we're also looking at how it will enhance the community and benefit the community to have these nicer amenities. So in our previous year and a half, we've had 20 some odd meetings, and most of the time, this has been a subject in that timeframe, so truly appreciate your insight, and as I said before, we might be calling on you at some future date for your expertise.
I just, I need one clarification if I could, because you were talking about B, I probably found what B is. So what we're deciding on, or what we've done is, we're going to put the $450,000 for the green loops and the pump stations into this current budget, we're going to leave the $980,000 in this current budget, and then we're going to add on, what is it, $300,000 for kitchen expansion in this budget. Is that what we're saying?
Well, when we get to the budget discussions, it'll be up to the board, do we want to add another 350 for the Lenai to the budget, or do we just want to wait? I'm fine with either decision. As far as the irrigation, it'll be up to the board to add that when we talk tentative budget on the next agenda item, to add the 450,000 as a vote into the tentative budget.
They're talking about option B, right? Is that option B?
So.
Option B.
Any changes to the tentative budget will need to be voted on by the board on the next agenda item when we talk tentative budget.
Is that what we're talking about, though? Getting all that?
To answer your question, yes, 350 and 450 could potentially be added into the tentative adoption of the budget. That subject matter is coming up next, and that is why this discussion transpired prior to the adoption of the tentative budget. Had we had this discussion after the adoption of the tentative budget, it would have made no sense, so that's why I moved the item, but you're absolutely correct, okay?
Okay.
Are we done with board discussion on this kitchen and irrigation options? Yes, no more public comment, thank you very much. Moving right on to the action agenda, number B, it's a resolution number 2018-0914-333, a resolution of Sun and Lakes of Sebring Improvement District to establish and adopt a tentative budget for the fiscal year 2019 based on the estimate of the revenues and expenditures for the district's general utility and golf funds, providing for conflicts, providing for survivability, providing an effective date. Do I have a motion to approve?
Sure. Move.
Okay. Board discussion?
I'll make mine easy, there's no way I can pass this. I vote against it. I can't imagine having a million three or a million four in a budget that we don't know what's going on for sure. I mean, I'm not going to be any part of it, I vote no.
Okay. Is there a motion to change the tentative budget for the items that we just talked about?
I'll make a motion that we add 250 for the Lenai expansion, since that was Cliff's basic estimate.
Second.
It's not 250, are you saying 250, I'm sorry? Did I miss?
That was his number, it was 287, take out 40.
Take out the sliding doors.
And take out the sliders, 250, and the ground loops.
And add in the greens loops and.
Cool.
Pump station.
Pump station, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll agree with that.
Thank you.
So we'll add those two items in there as a tentative item, okay?
We need to take a vote, because there was a motion and a second.
What'd you take out?
We didn't take out.
Public comment, and then?
But for one clarification from Mr. Brooks, supervisor Brooks, no, we didn't take anything out, what we did is we put in the scheme B or option B for the Lenai minus the doors for roughly $250,000, and we also put in the budgeted item for the greens loops.
And pump station.
Greens loop and pump.
Option B, okay. Any further board discussion on that? Public comment, please.
I do have one other comment, if I can, I'd like to know how we're going to pay for it.
I think we had a couple different options of financing that Mr. DeJesus provided to us, that's potential, one way of doing it, correct?
Correct.
I mean, that was the purpose of him providing us financing options. Now, if the question comes up that we don't like that option of financing, then that will bring on another discussion.
Should we not decide on how to pay for it before we approve it?
The tentative budget, with the 700,000 that we're adding to the budget is going to be through reserves, so we're paying cash as the recommendation.
So right now, is the plan is to take 2 million out of reserves?
I'm sorry, 2 million?
Yeah. We were going to take a million.
I don't have the numbers.
We were taking a million three before today, if we add on 700,000, we're around 2 million, 2 million 1, right? Is that our plan?
It's roughly going to be, we're talking 980 for the kitchen.
It's roughly gonna be, we're talking $980,000 for the kitchen, $250,000 for the Lenai. So that's 1.2 and then $450,000. We're talking about 1.7 million coming out of reserves. So it goes from the 5.2 that we have now down to about 3.5 at the end of this year is where our reserves would be for capital.
So we're gonna take 1.7 out of reserves and have no idea what we're doing with anything else down the road and how we're gonna deal with it?
Correct.
That's if we did everything...
If we did.
...this budget.
Any other board comment?
Tom Costy, resident. In my book, reserves is another word for taxpayer money. All of those reserves came from the taxpayers of Sun and Lake or from those that pay their water bill. Water Department Utilities generates about $4 million a year, or I'm sorry, $2 million, $2.5 million a year. The golf operation generates $4 million a year and assessments generate $4 million a year. That's the only income that comes into this district. And any reserves that are there are taxpayer money. And we've just voted to increase the assessments of the taxpayers here when we're sitting here with taxpayer money in the bank and we're talking about it like it's free money that we can spend on whatever we want to. I'm gonna guess that maybe 30% or 40% or maybe even 50% of the time of this board meeting over the past year has been talking about things like whether or not we can wear jeans on the golf course, what the rules are gonna be for the rulebook for the golf operation itself. We've talked about this kitchen on infinite items. This kitchen talk began with a consultant that was invited in here to tell us why we got wood rotting in the portico over the clubhouse. The consultant came in, he was asked to examine all the buildings and tell us what we can do with them. When he left, we're looking at a $1.5 million new town hall. We're looking at a million dollar improvements to this building, which include dressing rooms for the plays and the entertainers that could come in here and entertain us. We're looking at a new pool. We're looking at this expansion to the clubhouse at to the tune of close to $2 million. And all we wanted to know when he was invited here was, is the roof sound? The consultant came in, he was told what we wanted, he came back with a recommendation, and now it's like a snowball going fast downhill and it's taken on a life of its own with things that don't really... The people that pay the assessments and pay their water bill are the ones that are paying for everything.
Three minutes.
My name is Charlie Lowrance and I am a landowner in Sun and Lake. And I would like to talk about the lot assessments.
Charlie, can I ask you, can you possibly speak a little bit into the mic, a little more? Thank you.
Is that better?
Yep. For me, it works.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. The vacant lot, vacant lots in Sun and Lake of Sebring have a high foreclosure rate. And a consultant told the board in July 20th meeting that lowering the assessments on these lots would improve the ability to collect the taxes and help stem delinquencies. In the July meeting, Stephen McDonald, chief economist with GAI Consultants, said the assessments should more closely match the lot's market value. The vacant lots are not using the community center nor the playground. They are not assessing the same level of benefits as the homes in the areas, he explained. In fact, McDonald estimates the lots are only assessing 10% of the benefits that Sun and Lake provides to residents. People who own a vacant lot are not driving back and forth to their homes every day and using the roads. They are not using the parks or the recreation that are offered, McDonald said. He came up with the proposed changes and the assessments on the vacant lots based on this 10% value. Since the assessments are considered high on vacant lots, many owners have let them go. So my question to the board is, number one, why pay the consultant if you're not gonna listen to them? And then, number two, so am I missing something here? I mean, my Economics 101 says that zero times anything comes out to zero. So why not collect 10% and stop having these lots go into foreclosure and you collect zero from them? That's my questions to the board. I'd like to hear your answers.
Yeah, we'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Further public comment? I'm just writing a note. Get back. Amen. What?
I'm Sisalyn Price and I'm disturbed talking over this water at the gateway from 2006. That water been settled at the house. Imagine, I'm just asking for somebody to just move the water across the street. When the rain falls, it come right up to the house and I'm scared of halogeger and snakes. And it's hard to pay $61,000 and I borrowed $250,000. And just to move the water across, I've been asking times and times and it hasn't been done. And I'm tired of coming and speaking and going to the house and asks, please, can you let that water go across for me? And it hasn't been done. I thank you.
Thank you very much.
You get her address. We know where she is. Get her where she is. She'll be...
Any further comment? Thank you. Chrissy?
Supervisor Brooks?
No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegel?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
Okay. C. Resolution number 2018-09/14-34, resolution of the Sun and Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve the addition of the...
President Camp, the previous motion, we had to, there was an amendment to change, put the changed numbers in, so we need to have a second vote to actually approve it as amended.
So that was just for the changes, the $250,000?
Correct. So now we're gonna do, we need to do a vote to accept the tentative budget as amended.
Okay.
But it was $250,000 and $450,000, right?
Yes. Okay, but that was what essentially we were voting on to amend the existing budget to that. Now we have to have a motion to accept the budget...
Accept the tentative budget as amended.
As amended.
So move. Second.
Chrissy?
Public comment on the budget as amended.
Okay. Public comment on the budget as amended with the $250,000 and the $450,000. No public comment, Chrissy?
Supervisor Brooks?
Me? No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegel?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
Okay. Now we can go on to C. Resolution 2018-09/14-34, resolution of the Sun and Lakes of Sebring Improvement District to approve the addition of a speed table policy to the policy manual. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Board discussion. Public comment. Chrissy?
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Stegel?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Camp?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, discussion. To the board, district board meeting dates. We have the schedule for the dates. I think everybody has had the opportunity to sit with Tanya and discuss these. Yes, no?
My only question would be if, as long as the meetings went a couple in the summer, could we add one in July or would that make any difference? Just to, you know, so we wouldn't have a, I think we had two meetings, nine to four. I mean, I don't know if that'd make any difference if we added one or two during the budget time. I, you know, I don't care if we do that, but, you know, it doesn't make any difference to me. I just thought if there was a preference, because I don't mind an all-day meeting because our days are, but I just thought there might be somebody who wanted. Okay, we'll just leave it the way it is?
I'd rather have two short ones than one long one, but, you know, if you gotta spend the time, you might as well spend the time, I guess, but...
If the board would like to add a meeting, you certainly can do so. This is just a discussion item today that kinda allows you to talk to each other about the dates.
Honestly, after about 1 o'clock, I'm ready to go home or do something. These all-day deals last forever. I don't think you'd get my best productivity after about 2 o'clock.
I'm not in favor of adding additional meetings in the summer, but that's just my opinion. I don't care.
Okay. Andy Kessling and I also discussed the board meeting dates through April of 2019 in conjunction with the club events and there's no conflicts as we have through April of 2019, just to let you know. If there's any other conflicts, I mean, we can bring them up.
I probably spoke too quickly. We probably need, since I don't think we're gonna have one this year, to have a meeting with the Casper people. And we probably, I know you can't do that today, but we probably should kind of decide what month and see if we can pin a date down that would be agreeable to everybody.
Such as a special meeting, are you saying?
Well, I think we pay a guy, you know, $120,000 a year. We go to meet with him at least once a year and talk to him.
Can we not put that on the agenda as a discussion item?
Absolutely.
Well, last time we had a separate meeting for it. You don't wanna do that? That's fine.
I'm just thinking and you, to call a special meeting for a discussion with them, that, I don't know, there is no need. I don't, I don't see a need for that, why it can't be put on a gender item that's maybe on an agenda that's a little lighter.
Either way.
We can do that. I'd just like to meet with them at least once a year, since they are running the show.
I think last year they were trying to explain why they let the greens die, so I'm not sure that, we got, we got new people. Hopefully, we won't have to have that conversation again.
I currently don't have anything that I feel I wanna have a special meeting and discuss with Casper. That's me. I don't know, there's three other people. Support.
Not yet.
You know, if that arises and we have to call a special meeting, so be it. If not, and it arises and we don't have to call a special meeting, then we'll have it as a discussion at one of our scheduled meetings.
So does the board want me to bring these dates back as resolution?
Yeah. I mean, they're fine with me. I've already examined them.
Okay.
And I'm fine with them.
Other than that, we were changing the November date, right?
That was, that's, this is for next year.
This is next, this is next year.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Now, could a conflict arise next November? I don't know what the events are for next November of 2019, but we'll have to, they will be aware of these dates once adopted by the board, so...
Worse comes the worst, we gotta amend it again. Let's take it for now. Add-on items.
None.
I know we have a petition communication.
Yes, the Children's Museum of Highlands County has reached out to us to use our community center with the event fees waived in February of 2019 for their annual fundraiser event. If the, if you're not familiar with the Children's Museum, they are a local nonprofit organization for the, of course, if you have a child or grandchild that's ever visited that area, they've, they provide all kinds of educational and other items throughout the community for kids. So if the board is in agreement, what we would do is require a deposit by the organization. I said, if the board is in agreement for waiving the fees, we still would require a deposit for the use of community center.
Is this Kelly Dressel here by any chance?
She's, she's not here. No, sir.
She did not show up. Do we have any idea why they're no longer hosting it at the Chateau Alain?
Probably because they won't give it to them for free.
I know the Chateau, I believe, is up for sale. I know they're having some change of ownership. I'm just saying that just...
I think this is a worthy cause. I don't see any reason we wouldn't do this. Are you recommending that we do it?
Yes, absolutely. As long as we have a deposit fee on hand, I think it's a, it's a great...
And they'll take care of all the cleanup and everything else?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanna make sure that they're gonna clean up, pick up after.
Absolutely, yes.
You want a formal motion?
Just a consensus. No, we don't, yeah.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Staff reports. I don't have any. Cliff?
I'll go first. Really, the August financials are finished. We presented them to Omar today, so I got done with those early. Really very strong. We're still, we're still quite a bit ahead of budget to the tune of $120,000 better than budget, even with some of the odd things that happened over the years. So it's shaping up to be a really good year. The September trends are really very good. Really only did $7,000 or $8,000 in banquet revenue last year and we're gonna, we're pacing to be $22,000, $24,000. So sales have been much stronger. So September's gonna be pretty good as well. That being said and being over it, I've released some funds to, really to, more to get ready for the season, things that we've really kind of skimped on and tried to save, save, but we're buying, you know, glassware, some new tables in the banquet room that just aren't what we like to see, banquet service items, their chafers and more types of items to, you know, really better serve, especially our banquets. It's just not up to the standards that we wanna do. So it isn't, it isn't a lot, but I'll, there'll be a little bit of that spending coming up in September. Guess other than that, that's it. We're near full again on our next entertainment event, so not quite yet. We'll probably put an ad and we haven't, we really haven't invited the public yet. We might do that to try and fill up those final 30 or 40 seats, but we'll see. We may, we may not even have to do that, so... But anyway, everything's doing pretty, pretty, pretty good. Questions?
Just a comment. I'm sorry, go ahead. I did a comment that, and I hate Earl left, but the improvements he's making to Deer Run, just the look from the plantings, that he's taken all that old stuff out and putting new stuff in, it really looks great and he's to be commended for that. That's kinda on his own initiative, I guess.
Thank you. Just, if anybody sees him on the golf course, just tell him personally, it's always appreciated.
Do we have an update on the equipment deal?
We're, they're just dragging their feet about bids, so it's gone to RFP and we're, we are, we're just awaiting bids. We're trying.
Oh, we have, did we RFP?
No, not at RFP.
No, we have not. He's talking about the equipment lease, is that correct, on the golf equipment?
Yeah, I'm trying, yeah, on that lease, the lease.
Yeah, we have not advertised any bids at this point.
We haven't done anything yet?
We have not. We've only received a list from Earl, I believe, in the last seven days or so.
Oh, okay.
On the equipment lease, is what he's speaking of, so...
So, I'm sorry, when are we gonna do this? When are we gonna do the RFP? Soon? I mean, it's only in the budget, it's not a big deal. We just don't know the real number.
We, we do not know the real number. I don't, I don't have an answer at this time. I think Cliff and I need to sit down and talk through a couple other things on the bid, so...
I thought, I thought we were much further along with this.
Budget year starts October 1st. The budget year starts October 1st. We haven't, we haven't been able, I have the list of equipment. There's gonna be a lot of administrative time that's involved in getting it out to bid. We just don't have any timing for that just yet, so I'll have an update by the next meeting.
I thought we were much further along in this process, weren't we? Didn't I?
I personally had conversations this past couple of weeks and I had a little bit of a feel for where we were, where we were with it and I, I think, my understanding was, we still have some more work to do before we can go out to bid. I did express a concern, Ray, that because we're going from 2002 to 1... I did express a concern, Ray, that because we're going from 2002 to 182, I think it is, I'm trying to remember, I'm remembering the numbers off the top of my head, what's our fallback if we get into January or February and we still don't have the equipment we necessarily need? And it seems like we can work out something that's beneficial to both parties.
I was under the impression he's been working on this for months. Am I missing the, misunderstood, maybe?
I can't speak to him, he's not here, so I, I'm not going to comment.
He said he was three companies, you know, he gave us the list of equipment.
Like I said, I only received the list of equipment about seven days ago, I believe. So... I only received the list of equipment seven days ago or so, in email.
We had it at the last meeting, didn't we? Equipment? We didn't have that list? He didn't give us, Cliff didn't give us that list? Only I have that list.
I received a list, an email.
Of all the equipment with the red, in the red and yellow, all that?
I have an email with that.
We've had that for like six weeks.
I've had the email, yeah.
Okay. I guess we'll decide whenever we get to it.
I'll have an update for you by the next meeting.
Okay.
Can I ask one other question, and then I promise I'll be fine. Is it normal to have these many open issues when a budget is passed?
I think this year's been a very, very complex budget with looking at bullion eyes, looking at the kitchens, looking at irrigation systems, looking at a new design or concept of going to leasing which should be beneficial in going forward, and saving us a lot of money in maintenance costs and things of that nature. So the process might not be as quick as we ought to all like to see, but I, I think we're, we're trying our best to get this accomplished.
We've been working on these for five months, right? We did the capital back in January.
Yes, we did.
So next year will be much smoother, right?
Yes, it will, because if, if we get the lease, we won't have to worry about equipment if we have...
I'm talking about the whole process, because just so many open issues, and we passed the budget. I just don't, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Earl, done, Cliff?
Done.
General Manager?
No more staff reports. David has an update for the board.
We had our meeting with the county attorney, Tanya and Mr. Camp and I, met with the county attorney and Commissioner Handley, and the county thinks that we will be able to proceed and move forward with the potential zoning changes for Unit 16.
Really?
So we are to make the changes to prevent the, you know, the tiny house situation that there was a concern about. The, there's going to be some more research done, but the initial, or the, the current view of the, from the county attorney is that it can be done. We're looking into getting, doing some internal stuff with the district in order to get out, you know, potentially what we're going to do is when we mail out our, our bills at the end of October, include some literature for the affected properties to basically get some feedback from them about whether or not that would be, they would oppose such an idea or being, if, you know, be appreciative of such, such an idea and try and get the, you know, so we can, basically, the county will be putting itself at risk, because if there's anybody that has a objection to the zoning change, it would be the county that would have to, you know, deal with that, you know, potential lawsuit if it, if it came to that. So the more backup that we can give them, showing that it's a benefit to the community and wanted by the majority of the community, that will, you know, give the, the county some ammunition to fight back anybody that decides to oppose it. So we'll be bringing something to the board probably in the October, first October meeting for the board to consider, so they'll, you can see what we're going to send out to the residents of that unit. Also reached out to the current manager of Tanglewood, sent an email over to her, basically say, you know, we're, you know, we'd like to have a discussion about the current, or the 1996 contract that we're still operating under and, you know, open up some communications to potentially renegotiate that. I got a response from her, and we're looking at setting up a potential conference with some of her superiors with Hometown America in mid to late October, so we'll have, hopefully have some information or potentially a proposal to bring to the board at the second October meeting regarding that. That's all I've got.
Thank you, David. General Manager?
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors. Just a few updates on our projects. The Unit 2 ditch cleaning started yesterday, so this, this will finalize our drainage projects for the fiscal year ending, which is September 30th of 2018. Sunrise Drive, we hope to have all the, the road back in place and everything finished by Monday. And as you know, we had a water line break there and some other drainage issues that came about with that. I did hear from the majority lot owners along the Pebble Beach Drive extension, they need additional time to look over the information. I have some more information I want to provide them, so they have requested additional time at this point. At the last board meeting, you remember, we, we talked through the possibility of receiving an escrow deposit from them, so I'll be working with them for some additional information. So I did hear back. Lastly, we have been approved for the Silver Sneakers program, and that was brought up a couple meetings ago, I believe.
Yes.
Sir? Was it last?
Last meeting, yes.
Last meeting, I'm sorry. So we have been approved for that, so we're gonna, our recreation department will be working to implement that program.
You're going to make one lady very happy, for sure. Whoever that lady was that was here last time, she'll be happy.
Yeah, make sure you contact her.
That's all I have, thank you.
Follow-up, just a follow-up to the Pebble Beach. The, you're talking, the developer has reached, you've reached out to them and they've spoken to you?
I did, yes.
Did, and at the time, at the last meeting, we were kind of tossing numbers around as a starting point, let's say, or somewhat of a negotiation to see what they were willing to put into that infrastructure. Was that at all discussed? You said they needed further time. Was that presented to them?
No, they need additional, some additional information. They want to read through the, the board meeting packet from the last meeting, just so they understand exactly what was discussed. So they, they haven't turned down the argument.
So they have no idea that we might be looking for a good amount of that infrastructure to be paid for upfront?
No, no, they understand that, but that's what I say, what they're, my recollection is that what they're, you know, we told them to put their best foot forward, because, you know, what they come forward with may determine whether or not the project, you know, we decide to move forward with prior, the board decides to move forward with the project. And so I think that's what they're, they've requested additional information so that they can do, you know, they can say, this is what we're, you know, this is our best offer type of thing.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and I, just, just for me, I'm, I'm concerned, I talked to you both about it, but we, we got to get away from calling him a developer or her, because he doesn't own all the lots. He's, he, he's a substantial person in there, so we, you know, it's, and I, I want as maximum money we can get from him, but he's not a developer, because he's not developing the whole thing. Okay?
I think that's a pertinent point, because the interior lots probably aren't worth what it'll take to put the street and the road, um, street and infrastructure in, so we could have an issue with some of the other people who own lots there. We don't need to get ourselves back in another position where more's owed on the lot than is worth. That's my biggest concern. And you're, and that's a, that's a great point, that this isn't a developer who's putting the road in, who owns all the lots. I mean, it'd be pretty simple if it was, but it's, it's a lot more complicated than that.
He could buy all the lots, and then, then he would, then he would be a developer. You know, if he bought all the lots, if they're $2,000 apiece...
Yep.
That might, that might be a solution, because if those other people don't commit to it, that could hold up his whole project versus development.
Yeah, I go Tanya and David both to say, it's offering all the lots again, and then we can make him a developer or her.
I'm sure the Highlands County would sell him the lot in a heartbeat.
Yep.
Anyway, that's, everything for you, Tanya?
That's it, yes, sir.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Do we ever have any new business?
Once, I remember, maybe?
Maybe once. Committee reports?
None.
Okay. Public comment. Here's your time, have your public comment.
Dennis Swanson. I, I was at your last meeting, and I was complaining about the fact that on Monza Drive, they have two properties that have unauthorized, and to me, that means illegal, set up for their drainage, and because of it, the neighbor that's in between the properties gets water in its property for weeks at a time, and now it's coming across the road, and every time I get heavy rain, and it's flooding four properties on the other side. My complaint is, I've emailed, I've texted, and I've called and left messages requesting to know something about this, and nobody seems to know whether Monza can be considered included. I talked to Mike Hurley about it, and he said if they approved it, he could have a crew out there the next day, put the, fix the problem, and be done with it. Okay, the, I have a second thing. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry that Earl left, because I'll tell you, the aesthetics on the golf course is just amazing. Compared to what it was two years ago, it's hard to believe it's the same golf course. And I think you probably help with outside people coming in, because they don't go and hit a ball, and every time they hit a ball, they're losing it, and they lose 20 balls, and they don't come back again. But I do have a problem. I asked a question. I asked why the driving range is being closed for five weeks, why it isn't split in half like they did in the past to cure it, and I couldn't get an answer. And my concern is, I just got a bill for five, over five grand for a new membership, and I can't use the, I can't use the driving range. And everybody knows I use the driving range a lot. So my concern is, there, it seems like the focus is on the snowflakes that are coming, to make sure that they're all taken care of, and you have a lot of those people that have six months or maybe three months' memberships. I'm paying for a year, and I feel like if you're going to shut down part of the facilities, then Mike, then I should get a refund for a month or something, which probably never happened, and I don't expect it to happen. But I certainly would like to see the, the consideration of the people that are here paying full price to use the golf course year-round, and at least get answers when you ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any further public comment?
This is new business also, yes? Is this a place to present, and this is, because this is one of my first few meetings, Javita McKinney, sorry. I wanted to present something, but I don't know if it's the right place to do that. I'm interested in doing a business here in the Highlands area, so when you're having a new project coming up yourself as a private business person, can we present that here? Or is that a good thing to do? Just for getting some networking or some, because I'm new to the area, so if I present what it is or whatever, maybe not this meeting or the next meeting, but I'm just asking, is that something that you can do as a...
Establishing a business for yourself, is that what you're indicating?
Yes, sir.
To run out of your home, maybe?
Not at all.
Okay. The reason I say that is because...
No, that's a good question, yeah.
I mean, are you looking to propose something to the district?
In emails, certainly, you mean? Like send it in and let you all know?
We don't typically, we would not add it to the agenda as a presentation, but she's definitely welcome during public comment to mention her business, what she's doing, and, and any new services that you could provide.
Okay, so as it unfolds, then I'll send it to you and let you know, okay?
But this is the appropriate time, if you would like to mention, you know, your business. You're allowed to do that during public comment, but we would not add it to the agenda as a presentation.
Got that, okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure. Okay, so I'll refrain from telling it today, till it more unfold. All right, I'll tell you. I'm looking forward to opening a preschool, a preschool for, not going to be right in Sebring, but if you hear of anything in Sebring, do let me know. Loving Lambs Academy, we're under review for funding. So it'll do an after-school program, a summer program, and all-year schooling. Thank you for your time.
Congratulating, that could be very, very successful here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion to and from the board?
I have a question for Tanya. Do we know what Mr. Swanson's resolution is going to be, or do we, do you know what that situation is?
We do know the situation, yes, sir. We, the solution part of it, we've gone, Drew has looked at it, he's reviewed it. Mr. Hurley has reached out to Mr. Swanson. I know we, there, we have a couple of options. It's, there, there will be some costs probably associated to some of the homeowners in that option. So we, we've, we don't have anything in the budget for 2019 to address it, but it could be a very minor fix, or it could be a major fix. So we're, you know, Drew is still looking into some options there, so we don't have a, a final determination of what the best solution is. We are aware, though, yes, sir.
And he, and it's been addressed with him directly? With Dennis Swanson? Was it addressed directly to him, or was it a conversation between Drew and Michael and as to a proposed plan? Does Dennis, is Dennis aware that we're looking to do something?
He, he is aware. Mike Hurley has mentioned to him, we just, we haven't presented to him or to the board what the plan is yet. We're looking at different options for, for the street. We are aware, we've seen pictures, we've seen it firsthand of the flooding on the street. So Mike Hurley has had conversations with Mr. Swanson, but we, we're not to that point just yet.
Yeah, the, the way he made it sound, it appeared that the loop hadn't been closed with him, and I just wanted to make sure that somebody did get back to him.
It really hasn't. We haven't made a determination of what the best solution is, so...
That's fine, thank you very much.
I have that on my list, too, so I'll just make a comment, because I've dealt with Mr. Swanson now for about a year and a half, because I was the first, I think, first person who came. I just want, whatever we decide, I, I just don't think he knows. Just tell him yes or no, and when, because I think he's a little frustrated about that. Whether we do it, that's up to, to you guys. But I, I think he needs to be told what we're going to do and when we're going to do it.
Correct.
And, and that's all my, my concern is, because I, really, and I think he's been pretty good over this whole time, and it's frustrating for our people to, they just need an answer.
They do, and I drove out there three weeks ago with Drew and Michael. There was zero water, so I had to get Drew to explain to me what exactly is going on here and why can't we see it. So I've seen pictures, but I...
Correct me if I'm wrong. I've, I've been out there as well. Isn't that the ditch that the person filled in?
Yes.
Correct. It is not him, it's the neighbor.
It's the neighbor that filled in a ditch? Okay.
So I went out there to see it, again, this is the second time, and there was zero water, so I had to have Drew explain to me exactly, you know, we looked at the ditch line, so I was trying to visualize again what the real issue is, but...
And it's not just as simple as having that ditch cleaned out again where it was filled in?
I, I can't answer that right now, I'm sorry. I'm going to have to rely on, on Drew to, to make that determination with the best solution.
I've been there when water was standing in his front yard.
Yes, I've seen pictures in that respect.
And it was, it looked to me, it should be draining beside his to get it on out of Manor Hill, which is what I think Mr. Coste has told us on multiple occasions, that there's not supposed to be any culverts or anything else in there at all, does like my yard, and which means I have to wade across the water when we get a lot of rain, because that's what happens in my driveway, and everybody else is along there. But it does appear that someone has done something there that wasn't appropriate.
And Mark, Mark probably saw it, and we have not heard from the one individual beside the big house on the corner.
Right.
And that other person, that's the person who is a single father, raising three kids, and his whole front yard, he's the one with the real problem.
Yeah, it stands there.
It stands there for, and he's not been in here, so, and I just...
He probably should be.
He's the one that should be in here, so...
That's why we went out there to view it, just so I could see it. There was zero water standing. And that was three, four weeks ago.
It's the street from Swanson's house, it looks like a swamp. But a second question, the lady who was here, I don't know if she's Jamaican or what, I had a difficult time understanding her, but if I heard her correctly, she has water standing, she, we need to get moved off her front yard, or...
Mr. Hurley and Mr. Lloyd has visited her area, and we do maintenance cleaning in her area continuously, so this is, they, they do stay in contact with her. She lives off of Balboa, which is Oviedo, I believe, and Balboa, there's very, very few houses right off that street, so it is very wet, we understand that. Uh, so they have been working with her, correct, in the, in her situation, so. The water levels have been, you know, astronomical the last couple of years, especially after Irma, so, uh, maintenance staff is working with her, yes, sir.
As long as it's being addressed, I just don't want a, a resident to think we're ignoring them.
No, not at all.
Great.
Any other further discussion?
I have one thing, Mark. Uh, I, I talked to you, Tanya, about it, and, and Mike, but, uh, the scrub over there by number 10 on Deer, are we scheduling to, not the trees, but, and there's some dead trees in there, but I'd like, I was there again yesterday, and there's just a mess in there of our grass clippings, and I'd like to have that cleared, cleaned out, not the trees, but it's just a mess in there. And Hornet cleaned out the mess we had over there behind his property, but it's, it looks terrible, it's a mess in there. Do we have plans to clean that scrub out of there and make it look halfway decent?
Are you, which side are you talking?
Uh, on the right side. We're, uh, we own, we own on the right, on the other side of the lake, and then over to the right where there's going to be no construction right now.
You're talking about towards the sun and lake?
Yes, on the right. No, not towards the lift station, towards the corner.
Towards Sun and Lake?
By Sun and Lake Boulevard.
We're, we're going to be looking into that as part of the maintenance and drainage plan as priority one that we have on our list. Uh, as long as it's on our property, we'll be looking into some of that.
Yeah, I don't want you to clean, even though Mr. Hornet cleaned a lot of ours, and-
But we do have clippings and other things back there that do need to be picked up. Yes, sir.
I'd like to see that cleaned up, if I, if could.
Okay.
It just looks, that whole area looks nice to me now, uh, that it's all cleaned up, but in our area, it's just a mess in there still. Okay?
Understood.
I think it has been a dumping ground for, for some time. Just so the board's aware, uh, Tanya and Earl, and I think Cliff and I are going to go take a look at the scrub jay preserve, if you will, on Turtle Run, and make sure that we're cleaning out what should be cleaned out and not cleaning out what shouldn't be cleaned out. Um, and this is a, a subject that's, uh, important to me in that I was chairman of